This time I'd like to call the work session of the fifteenth to order. Roll call, please.
And stepped out to get her iPad. You want somebody else to do the roll call?
Um.
You just.
Yeah.
Parker.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Brenneman.
Here.
Haley. Waits.
Here.
Mulaney Henry.
Here.
You have a four.
Four. Okay, this time I would ask for approval of the agenda.
I move to approve this evening's agenda.
Second week.
Hold on a second. Hold on and hold.
Everybody.
Folks.
Before you approve, I was going to ask if we could amend the agenda. Add another topic. And that would be low income rebate program. We need to provide an update to board on that.
I would move to amend this evening's agenda to include the low income rebate program.
A second.
You stepped. Roll call, please.
Did you already take? We needed again.
You need. So we need roll call for the motion to approve the amended agenda.
Very good. Parker.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
Brenneman.
Hi.
Waits.
Hi.
Mulaney Henry.
Hi.
Is Haley online?
He is not.
That motion carries.
Okay, this time we're at the board update, MGM update. Any board members have anything that they would like to update?
Um, yeah, I would. I would like to update the board. Uh, we have been contacted. Both Stevie and I have been contacted by the Unified Government. Um, to meet with on the meeting will be on Monday, this coming Monday, the twentieth. With Commissioners Bynum and Hill. And I think some staff from the Unified Government. Um, as I understand it, it is a renewal of the task force that was formed the year before last. Um, dealing with the pilot reduction. So I think that that. It came out of the bill separation effort, although. I am. I am unclear as I sit here today on exactly what the topic of the task force will be.
It was discussed at the last meeting that Mr. Waits attended the after his presentation, they talked about the. Commission talked about restarting this group and asked Melissa to sit in on. And you and some other people.
Okay, I attended that meeting remotely, President.
So did I.
The the actual topic was listed in the invite. That said, fabrication of the bill as well as the pilot reduction. So those two items are going to be part of the discussion. Um, let me go ahead and also, uh, report that I did give an update. As requested by the mayor. Many of the slides, uh, that were provided. And there was a back and forth playing games, stuff that happens as usual, you know, um, but, uh. We got her done and, um, as a result. Uh, we have this meeting scheduled for elected officials to do stuff. Um, to get along with the, uh. Things that our constituents have asked us to to try to.
You're talking about the the meeting that Rosa's rear efforts.
Correct, correct.
Not a meeting of the full commission and the full.
No, no.
Because they had talked about that too, that I hate to buy up David B. I have not had any contact from the UG. Regarding a setting up a meeting for the or.
Yes, that would be too many micros.
Yes, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm trying to be quiet, I'm trying, uh, but I'm gonna say, say again, um. That. When we have been asked to to by our. Those who who elected us to do a job. And we try to do that job. We give resistance, not from the elected body. But from the staff who does stuff opposite or different than what we've, uh, have been asked to do. It kind of concerns me a bit. Um, uh, and sometimes no one likes to micromanage people. Particularly, I don't think elected officials want to micromanage staff. But unfortunately, it seems that there are things that happen. That, uh, that elected officials are not aware of until after the fact and it it becomes alarming. And disturbing and concerning to me. So I just wanted to to share that. With 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 the board today.
I also have anything. Mr. Haley, you have anything?
I'll see. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, so GM Congress will certainly go on to the next topic, but I would say to. Discussion you just had for Monday's meeting, if you need. Any information or anything from BPU staff, that's not us now. We're supporting your efforts here. Uh, next topic is. Monarchs, the electric and water building, so. I will, uh, start off by saying, uh. There's been probably a year. Laurie, I'll look at you, a year, a year and a half, if you want to come up here. Discussion where the Monarchs have been inquiring about. What their bill. What their bill is, how much usage, and, uh, this has been. Questions coming to us and we certainly have Laurie's, Laurie or her group has been. Certainly providing all the information that they've been requested, then more recently, there's some conversation between. EPU and the Unified Government over a contract that, uh, was formed. When the Monarchs, uh, took over the baseball stadium and began to occupy the stadium itself. By Unified Government. They had purchased the stadium or take over the stadium. And that was during the time of Mark Holland, uh, was mayor. Uh, there was a meeting between BPU and the Unified Government at that time. Dave Alvey, Don Gray, and I went over to discuss, uh, Unified Government. Booming that property. And the discussion at that time was. Uh. You know, if you, you know, BPU's question at that time was, it says this is now the Unified Government facilities. And it's going to be rented. The Unified Government wants to receive revenue that. Thought was that BPU would be able to receive its revenue. Based on a baseball team occupied, so. And that was agreed upon at that time, it was a verbal agreement, there was nothing. I didn't write or anything, so. Fast forward to the contract, there was a contract that I fit to all of the board members. And in that contract at, uh, specific rates at that proposal, at that time, uh, I think it was twenty twenty. And certainly since the N R rates have been adjusted, uh. And that's not something that, uh. That they want to pay for. Okay, so. Uh, when this contract was signed, uh, we obviously didn't have copies of it, just more recently got copies of it, so. It's like other things that I keep talking about, you know, when it comes to. Development agreements, contracts, anything that Unified Government enters into that's going to. Effect BPU, it'd be good for us to at least be there to understand. Maybe have a voice in that, but at least understand early. You know what that impact on the utility is going to be, and as opposed to waiting. Until years later to find out, so. Laurie's got some information on what the financial impact is.
Hey, Bill, can I ask?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Just clarifying question. Um, a year, year and a half ago, the questions initially came from the Monarchs to BPU? Or from the Unified Government to BPU?
Monarchs from, uh, to BPU.
Okay, and they were asking about billing and. Okay.
They wanted to break down another bill. Uh, at that time, that's what we provided them, not knowing. That this was in the agreement or whatever.
Sure. Okay.
Because the new grades were, oh, apologies, Steve. No, no, wait, the new rates, I'm assuming we didn't have a contract, copy of the contract when the rates went up for everyone else, we just. That automatically affected them and then they. Having the contract themselves did the comparison.
The only conversation about a contract with me was with a former administrator. Who said they were working on, and this came out after. He gone left, BP was not paid. He said, you know, we're not only going after that, but we're also entering into a new agreement with, uh, with a new owner. And what we're gonna, what we're gonna do is make sure BP is paid. Entirely what's owed. But the Unified Government was going to pay for half of the bill. Then the new team, the new owner was going to pay the other half until some later date. To where he's fully established and operating, he would have fully paid off the bill. Uh, again, that was just a brief conversation with, and I hadn't seen any contract then.
When it, when it was still the T-bone, when they were out there, they were in. Bankruptcy or whatever, and the UG was trying to work with them to get whatever. We, as I understand, we entered into some sort of an arrangement, I wouldn't say an agreement or contract or anything, but an arrangement. Where we build the T-bones or we build the UG for the full amount. They then paid half, the UG paid half and the T-bones paid half. So, and it's kind of looks like in this contract, contract, that the rate that they signed up for was the half. The half rate, the twelve and a half, six and a half.
Exact wording.
So they kind of took the, what was the, what we had. Agreed to with or entered into with the T-bones, that is, that arrangement. Put it in paper for the Monarchs, but the UG should have been, have we been billing, what have we been billing them the full amount?
Right of the rates.
Okay, now are they wanting a refund?
So that haven't come up yet, but they have had for a. An adjustment back to the twenty twenty rates, so.
And in, in the contract. It said the payment of certain utility expenses, this is six, three, section six, three, six, three. For the first twelve months, it only talks about that this arrangement, that this reduced amount would be for the first twelve months. And after the.
Second.
Yeah, and then that was, that was the, that was what I was attempting to to explain, so. But Doug Bockett said at the time is, whatever the bill is, Unified Government is going to pay half. But when the Unified Government is going to pay us all of it, and they collect half of it from the Monarchs. So we would be getting the full amount, Monarchs would be paying Unified Government for half of. Okay, and then sometimes a year, eighteen months later. They would have to pay, the Monarch would have to pay the full bill themselves, and the Unified Government is going to be removed.
Okay, and that like this, it says twelve, it limits it to twelve months, the utilities to twelve months, the reduced rate.
That's the interim agreement.
And there was a, and this was a ten year agreement after that.
So I disagree with what was sent, I still agree with what I had.
Yeah, yeah, there's a.
So.
There were, there were two agreements. So what are the terms in the ten year agreement?
Ten year agreement. The same. So six and a half, six and a half cents per KWH for the electric portion of the utility bill. Dollar seventy seven for the water portion of. Dollar seventy seven at CCF.
And does that represent that, well, does that represent the entire amount that's supposed to be being billed to? The Monarchs, or I'm confused as to where the UG is in this, I mean, are they still supposed to be paying half or not? I'm just trying to figure that out.
That was not in the.
The Monarchs were supposed to pay full rate.
Right.
At six and a half percent and dollar seventy seven per.
Right.
KWH.
But the Monarchs.
Or CCF, excuse me.
Monarchs now are complaining to the Unified Government about. Uh, this is the rate that I, that we were contracted to pay. BP's raised those rates, now we have a problem paying that amount.
Because when the ten year agreement was entered into between the Unified Government and Monarchs. Um, there was, there was no provision in that agreement. Um, to account for the BP's rates get adjusted sometimes, is that right?
You're right.
And so. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mary.
I just, when did the ten year contract, what was the date of the ten year contract?
November fifth of twenty twenty.
We'll, we'll get you this, or you can send this out.
Isn't that what you sent him?
I apparently I sent the.
Oh, you did? I thought you sent him.
I have a November fifth, twenty twenty one.
This is November fifth, twenty twenty. Okay, but in November fifth of twenty twenty, it says it's for the first twelve months, it's only for twelve months.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying too, okay.
Yeah.
So. Yeah. I don't know how they.
That was, so there's another one, because that, if you look at the term in Article four, that was to get through COVID. And so that one just went to twenty twenty one.
That it says first twelve months.
Right, but the term of the contract is only, that contract expired on October thirty first, wait a minute.
Let's see, I've got October thirty first, twenty thirty one.
Excuse me, October thirty first.
Yeah.
What the, you look on that page six of yours. I didn't, I didn't print out the whole, I just printed out the section that was.
So anybody that, when you look at.
The attachment, yeah, it says. October thir- thirty one, twenty thirty one.
Okay, that is the second one.
Okay.
That is the second one, second one.
But it does have the piece that you're referring to, Tom, where it does outline the first twelve months in section, or in Article six.
Yep, okay. Okay, and so, so. They've contracted for a rate. Um, obviously BP was not part of the contract negotiations. Um, and in that contract, there is no provision for adjustments to BP rates. Was that intentional? Do we know, Angie?
I do not know. I don't, I was not involved in that, I did not know about this provision until it came up.
I would, I would say it was probably not considered even. I mean, I'm just guessing, but that's just something you wouldn't really.
Well, in, in fact, it is something that. I mean, for some, for, for, that fluctuates. Uh, in a, in a development, in a, in a development agreement like this, that is something that would have been considered by both sides attorneys. I, I can assure you of that, it should have been. I want to say nobody would have thought of that, it should have been. And so it wasn't, and that's fine, and so that's where we're at today. Um, and so.
Had we received a copy, we would have spoke to that.
Mm-hmm. Understood. Understood, but, but, but we didn't receive a copy, so we didn't know. And so now we've got the Unified Government coming because the Monarchs have now gone to the Unified Government, it sounds like. And said, hey, we want to pay these rates that are in this contract. Where there was no adjustment and. Potentially we want to rebate back to the time we started billing these new rates. And the Unified Government is asking BP to honor the original rates only. And potentially give them a rebate?
I, the Unified Government, I believe, is covering the rebate.
Yeah, so that, that wasn't officially asked of us, it was just to reduce, reduce the rates back to the twenty twenty level. Um.
What period is there excessive use for them?
Twelve months, that's all I, I'm sorry.
What period is there more excessive use for the stadium? I mean, when.
During the summer.
Just during baseball season?
They are an all electric facility, but I mean, they're, they're season during the summer, and so that's their. One of their highest bills, although they did have the Christmas things, so.
Right.
Uh, you know, we just have one year of that. Or one season of that.
How long did that go? I can't remember.
It was only a couple of months.
It went Thanksgiving to December thirty first.
Okay, true.
So, I mean.
So there's not like a seasonal, I, I, I mean.
So.
Go ahead.
But I did also send you, uh, some other attachments, one was. Part of the char- charter ordinance, charter ordinance, so where the Unified Government basically can set the rate, okay? And then the additional attachments were for BP had paid for two energy audits. For the T-bones that we have suggested the Unified Government and. The Monarchs follow if they want to reduce their energy consumption. And it did lay out in there. Uh, what their biggest energy, uh, usage component is. And then it goes all the way to, uh, to the least thing identified in that, you know, stealing energy audits. So to my knowledge, they haven't completed that. Uh, and I don't, I have no idea when. Other than they, they have said that they would be towards funding. Uh, making money available for the next two to three years.
The Monarchs have said that? Okay.
I.
Well. We've not met with the Monarchs, we, you've only met with BP, is that correct? I mean, with the UG.
Uh.
We should, we, we met. Oh, that's, that's when you passed on the energy audits to them.
Right.
Okay, so you have met face, face to face with them.
G, yes.
No.
With the UG. Yeah, did you meet with the Monarchs? Because I thought in this last meeting. That you said that the UG, that the UG was going to meet. All three of us and the Monarchs didn't, weren't there.
Well, yeah, so that was what I thought too. It was a meeting between all three parties, and when we got there. Uh, the Monarchs were asked not to come there because. UG wanted to, to meet with BP, uh, before we met with them. And, uh, and then at that time, I was asked to, uh. Reduce the rates back to twenty twenty.
The UG asked you to do that?
That's what I told them. Not without running this past the board and, and, and at least making sure you guys fully aware of that, so. Oh, we were reminded that they own it, so.
Well, I know. I mean, that's the way, the way that the ordinance reads, I mean, everybody read it, right, we don't have any say in this whatsoever. We, we, we don't have any say in this, but more importantly, there's a contract in place between these two parties that we don't have any say in either. And so, well, I mean.
We don't, what, what do you mean, I don't. You say we don't have any say.
We don't.
We don't.
We're not a party to that contract.
We're not a party to the co.
And we're also, if the, if the, if by the, by charter ordinance, you have it right there. If the, if the Unified Government, um. If, if the Unified Government requests. That a certain entity. Uh, receive certain utility rates. We, we must do that, because.
That's not the way I read it.
Well, I hear you.
I agree with that.
But I will tell you that, I will tell you that I, yeah, it's, well, go ahead.
No, it, it says the Unified Government may fix special rates for utility services and products furnished. To the Unified Government for public purposes. Now, I don't feel that the Monarchs. Is a public, is a public purpose, and this does not, that sentence does not apply.
So they, they don't lease the facility, they manage it on behalf of the Unified Government.
Do you, what is, what is a public purpose? Is it, you think it's a public purpose? That the UG can set the rates out there at whatever they want because it's a public purpose?
So I think the UG can make that determination if they believe it to be a public per.
If they, you know, how do we?
I think by setting the rates they've set.
I think they can say if it benefits the public.
Right, and I think the fact that it is a management agreement for a UG facility instead of a lease. It, it has a little bit of a thing on it.
This is most provocative, this is kind of my question along this line, is this a unique circumstance? I think about public purpose, like the golf course, for example, or are there any other examples? I, I don't want to go too far afield of the solo purpose right now with the Monarchs, T-bones, whatever. But is there any other arena where we're providing services, commercial, industrial, recreational? Where they, the UG might be able to fix that rate or to have this discussion?
No, the UG has to own the property.
So what about, what about the, the golf, or, or what else, or out by the lake? Why not lake?
They also pay us a flat fee for water for, for a golf course.
And that didn't change, the, the fee didn't change for the golf course?
It's been.
Paying fees?
No, it's been the same, it's just a flat. Dollar amount.
And that's true to, uh, the electric rate of. Did that change?
Yeah, it's served, yeah.
So the golf course is in Bonner Springs, and that's every chief's area.
Are there any other examples, though, that are in our purview? Other than this one specific industrial order, so.
The gym. The gym.
Yeah, I was going to say that, so, so a while back, and I, I know some board members will remember this, but. The Argentine Rec Center was, was, uh.
Don't get me started.
Rented out or leased, whatever, we wanted to determine that, uh. And then there was a fitness center that came in, and the Unified Government was renting space there, okay, so. So the conversation I have with the Unified Government is, okay, on UG properties that you're going to rent. And receive revenue, we want to make sure BP is receiving a revenue too. So they did go out and meter that so that we can, we can now charge the customer for. For electric usage, and I, I'm not sure how we ended up with the water, I think they paid some. Some percentage of water, but I can't remember the specific.
The rate increases reflected, it's, that confirms that it's, so that the. Ground space is actually metered.
Right.
So we do have a precedent where there's a similar circumstance where in fact, rate increase is reflected. With the rec center?
So, uh. I, I didn't look at that, but I would assume that.
It creates their, yeah, the rate increase here.
The gym. Yeah, there, there are regular retail rates.
Is it possible the Unified Government has entered into any other long-term contracts with fixed rates that we will not become aware of until? Any of those entities dispute their bill, like, can we, could we ask them for an inventory?
They, they performed one a few years ago, a couple of years ago, and, uh. And it wasn't, wasn't anything that they turned over to us at that time to show that there's anything different.
There's not any reason to believe that there are. Other similar circumstances that we're not yet aware of.
The only thing that I received was the information they were making about our act.
Which wasn't that just the names of the building location?
Yeah. It was, it was made, make sure they have identified the buildings, the type of buildings. So that we can have that, and also a question was asked, is there anything else similar to, uh. To the, uh, fitness center, and I was not provided anything definite about that.
That list didn't contain, though, this current situation.
I'm sorry.
That, that information didn't contain any information about the Monarchs. Energy usage rate.
No, because that was, that was, that's a separate contract agreement.
Uh, I guess that's my fear, if we, we were only, we're only aware of this one because the Monarchs. Reached out and said, hey, we have a contract that charges us a different rate, right? I'm afraid we're not going to become aware of any similar circumstances until another entity has the same complaint.
No one that worked on this agreement is there now. So, um, I'm not aware of any others, but I also wasn't aware of this one, to be fair.
So what do they want from us? I mean, ultimately, they.
They just roll the race back to twenty twenty and, uh, and charge them what they were. What we were charging them in twenty twenty.
And again, I don't, I don't believe that the four, or the, or the BPU has any authority whatsoever to say no to this, I just don't.
Yeah, I agree.
And I will tell you subsection K of section thirteen of the charter ordinance. That makes you and me personally liable for any loss incurred by the Unified Government. I don't want to investigate that this year.
Where this be an unprecedented, this will be the solo example of where a rate, there was a, are there other examples?
I would be willing to bet you it is not the solo example.
Okay, well, I'd like to see what.
I, I don't have that information, but.
Also, we back the rates, and what is that, what are those circumstances? It may be a laundry list, but just to give some examples.
I'm sure our residential customers would want the same.
Well, this is where I was going, you know, I mean, I mean, it, it, it's just, just so we could say, well, we got some prime examples. Where, a lot of people, I love the Monarchs, I go to a lot of games. A lot of people are not, a lot of residential are not able to go to Monarch games. First and foremost, there is no public.
I, I.
I mean, I, I do, full disclosure, I do, but a lot of people I know don't go to. They aren't able to, and so it's not a, well, public use, um, across the board. I'm sure for some of them will.
Right. I mean, it's, it's.
So.
I mean, let's just call it what it is.
Yeah.
Now we're subsidizing.
Thomas's point, Thomas's point, at the end of that verbiage. It says in other charitable organization, that it doesn't say.
Or, or to organize institutions of charity.
Yeah, organize institutions of charity, and that, you know, and so that's like, well, what are we? And so when he, when he questioned public. Yeah, and it made me look at that and say, wait a minute, is, is this, what do they mean and how do you define public? But I guess when you, uh. Own the BPU, I guess you can make a decision. So. The only other thing you can, I can think of, uh. That we entered into with the Unified Government on any other facilities was. Uh, doing forward the vaccinations out at the Armory and at the, uh.
Kmart.
Kmart. Because Unified Government get occupied those, um, temporary. It asked us if we would not charge for energy out there, and we said yes.
I'm glad we did that.
I am too. Yes, right, right. The only, the only other time was they asked if we could waive the fee for a warming center across the street. And I said, what if we, what if you pay half of the bill? And then we would reduce it, but it was only for a few weeks.
It was, yeah, December to. March.
December to March, so.
That's indeed.
Never, ever come up, uh, but I agree with what Ron was saying, I don't think. I have a choice, I don't think the board has a choice in this situation.
I, I totally agree with that as well. And I'm feeling because we are trying to work on some other issues. And I'm feeling because we are trying to work on some other issues that our customers need and want. That it's, it's difficult for us to take a really adversarial approach, even though we might feel that way. Or we're not, I'm afraid we're just gonna make too many headwinds on other issues that we really need to work on.
I appreciate that. I, I didn't vote for the rate increase for anybody, residential, commercial, or industrial. Again, full disclosure, I mean, but what would be the impact to roll back? That, I mean, I'm sure you looked at what that is, that means in terms of a net loss in the revenue generated. Would that be the case if we were to do that for this particular, this one particular, uh, rate there, uh, 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 the monarchs?
Yeah.
I mean, if we can run those numbers whenever it's particular, I'd like to be, because if.
You got the numbers.
Okay.
So our kind of all-in rate, base rate, ERC, uh, environmental surcharge is around eleven cents. Per KWH, and so we would be giving them a contract rate of six and a half cents. And that's stagnant during this time period, so as we do, I think we've got one more, uh, year of rate increase. On the electric side, so, and then as the ERC fluctuates, um, you know. When it goes down, that helps us, but it could go up. On the water side, um, overall, it's about three dollars and twenty cents a CCF. And so they're being charged a dollar seventy seven a CCF.
So, uh, not to be flip, but do you have a ballpark figure for what that would be? Park isn't monarch.
She's gonna pass out.
Have your calculator there?
I think that we, and just any time you turn on the TV today, you'll, you see. Two attorney, attorneys for one side and attorney for another side, and they have totally different interpretation of the word. Is or was. I think that we need to have our own counsel, BPU, somebody that we have that is. Our counsel, look at the contract, look at the, the, and then tell us where we're, where we're at. And what, what our options are, and that we don't rely on the UG.
So. Another portion of the charter ordinance says that. That you have to rely on council approved by the UG or council assigned or, or the chief counsel, so.
Well, even when we have, when we're, okay, so how do we, how do we, you've got attorneys for everything else?
Right, and I approve all of those.
Okay, so approve us an attorney.
You also can't sue or sue the unified government because it's one entity. So not.
Oh, we're not saying suing them. I said, we just want to know what, what.
The conflict to have the same attorney, I'm, you know, representing both entities.
But it's one, really one enti- one legal entity.
So that's my, my purpose here. My hands are tied, right? But I didn't want to agree to any reduction without you guys fully being aware of that. Because of, uh.
Think we have.
I think we've all, we've all remembered.
Is this going to go to a vote, or you're just gonna do this on the spot, and you're gonna do it on yours, on your own motion?
I mean. It's information only, uh.
We could all vote no and then that.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm.
It's, it's, it's information only. I'll contact the county administrator.
Tomorrow and give him his answer.
And so if I read this correctly, there's a, there's a.
So what do we tell, what do we tell?
If you, I just wanted, what, what's awesome handed us to, just so I'm reading it correctly. The variance would be in total between what's currently being billed with the rate increase. And with the, going back to the previous of rates, is it two hundred and twenty nine, what, what?
Two twenty, so first column there is the electric side. Our rate versus the six point five cents KWH. Middle part is the water portion, and then the last section is the total. And so this started when their ten-year agreement basically kind of kicked in. Uh, or when the services got put in their name, which was June of twenty twenty-two. And, uh, that it's going through current, uh, or like, May probably has already built, but this is through April. So it is a total of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars.
That would be rebated for that.
During that period.
That's a, going back to.
April period.
It would, it would be in the UG's.
Okay, I think Angie's saying the UG is gonna do the rebate.
I mean, there are some understandings.
This is all.
Yeah, but based on this moving forward, we'd probably be in the ballpark of ten thousand dollars a month.
Roughly.
Less revenue than I could get if we're charged the whole, right?
We were vilified because we didn't, uh, collect what we needed to collect from the T-bones.
I ran on that.
And you were left.
I was, I was on that. Well, no. All due respect, right?
So, so again, my question, what do we tell our, what do we tell our statements? What do we tell our? Uh, what do we tell the electric? Sorry, what, what, what do we tell the, the electric? Rate pairs? Yeah, well, we just, we just tell them that, uh, there's, there's no convention here for the board or for the general manager. I have. Nothing to counter any of this. I did ask, uh.